Okay, welcome to the fourth edition of the TIBFEE webinar. This is our way of celebrating 40 years of TIBFEE existence in the Philippines. And what better way than to introduce, to invite these three fine gentlemen that we have here, Dr. Andy, Dr. Perry, and Dr. Allen. And it's a topic that's close to our heart because it's transitioning to a post-COVID world. Is there gonna be a post-COVID world? Ideas to reboot business, what works, what doesn't? And this would be based on a lot of what historical data experience. With us here, I took a look at your work experiences. You've got like maybe what, close to 75 years or 80 years of work experience among the three of you. And so, we're very excited to listen to what you've got to say. Beth? Yeah, okay, thank you. This was a quote that I actually mentioned, maybe a couple of webinars that you've had. I think they are now under 26 webinar, but I said this something like when, on the second or third webinar, I said, "It's a great 30 minutes kiss." Oh my, but it's keeping it short and substantial because you know, you get a lot excited about all the topics that they have. It's very varied and short, skipping within their 30 minute promise. But because they've got question and answer, that's something that we have to also look at. Substantial because the great topics that are relevant, especially to folks COVID in the tourism and hospitality industry. A lot of information, really, we've got a lot of students, a lot of faculty members, even graduate students. And we also have industry participants who are joining us right now in the 30 minute talk. So, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Beth, who's going to be our moderator for this particular workshop, webinar. She is currently the dean of Lyceum of the Philippines University. By the same time, she's, she also has a lot of experience in Papua Koa. She's an accreditor. She also is a VP, Vice President for the, one of the organizations that we have are me, Dr. Beth. And what else you have up your sleeve? She's got, she wears many hats actually, and it's keeping her very busy. She has like a 20 hour full, 20 hour work week, 20 hour work day. Beth, I'll give it to you now.
Thank you very much, Mam Tina. It's an honor to again be part of the Tourism Industry Board Foundation webinar. And today, we have a very interesting topic. It's about transitioning to a post-COVID world. Ideas to reboot business, what works and what doesn't. And as mentioned, we have three fine gentlemen, of course, from the 30 minute talks. It's a Wednesday engagement. It's always a date with the three gentlemen. And later, I have the pleasure of introducing each one of them. Again, thank you very much for inviting me to TIBFEE. This is already my fourth time moderating the webinar session. It's an honor and of course, we cannot say no to TIBFEE, to TESDA, and of course, to the Department of Tourism. And of course, we have a very good number for this morning. And let's take a look at the profile of our participants. We've been very consistent in terms of the numbers, but of course, we appreciate the participation of our loyal participants who still wants to learn and get new insights despite this situation. So, we have the most number of participants that registered last September 10, between 12 noon to 2:00 PM. So, we have around 23% of them, followed by a group who registered September 14 on different timings. In terms of registrants by industry, of course, we have the most number of participants from the academy. We have 47%, followed by participants from the industry at 20.67%. And of course, we have participants from the government sector at 20.28%. We also have participants coming from CHED or the higher education sector at almost 53%, followed by the public sector and also TESDA at 1.66%. Registrants by industry, we're glad to note that we have the most number of participants coming from the travel and tour sector at 44.76%, followed by participants from the hotel and the hotel and accommodation sector. In terms of registration in the government sector, we have quite a number from the local government unit at 51%. And then from the tourism sector specifically at 26.21%. And from the Technical Education Skills Development Authority at almost 5%. We also would like to acknowledge the rest of our registrants from SBMA, National Parks Development Committee, and from Department of Education. Registrants by country, you'll be surprised that of course, we have 96.06% from the Philippines. And from the United States, we have 16 participants. And the rest of from United Arab Emirates, from Japan, from Taiwan, from Indonesia, and from India. And I'm sure we have more participants now that we are live streaming at YouTube and FB Live. So, thank you very much. And just a very short briefing for us to optimize our webinar experience. Each participant is requested to put their cell phones in silent mode to reduce interruptions in concentration. Microphones are turned off for all the participants. And we encourage everyone to participate actively. You'll know the reason why later. And we would like you to explore the chat boxes to put some comments. We also have our Q&amp;A tab for questions that you would like to raise to our speakers later on. And be reminded that only those who have pre-registered and stayed at least 80% of the session will be given e-certificates. And no video will be turned on for all participants except for the speakers. So, video will be turned on only at the end of the, for the photo opportunity. And of course, we would like to announce the most engaged participants for last session's webinar. So, I think we had that last September 8. We had three winners. We have Petit Buencosero, Ira Leis Sugitan, and Hazel Marie Juanilas. I hope all three of you are present this morning. Are you all here? And they gladly received their prizes that was choreographed already through Mam Tina. And I feel that the most important treasure is the ASEAN MRA USB that has all 242 competencies. You don't need to upload, to download anymore, so it's there and just a click. So, please enjoy it and share it to your colleagues.
So, again, I'd also like to share that all of them are actually out of NCR. One is from Palawan, the other one from Nueva Ecija, and the other one is in Los Manos. And Ira, I just saw a chat from her, is present in today's webinar as well.
Hello, Ira. And I think Hazel is also present. And I, I expect that Petit is also here in the session. So, this is a very good encouragement for all our participants this morning. So, how do you get to be chosen, Mam Tina?
You have to make sure that you ask very, what, nice questions to our, to our board, to our panel of speakers. You can also give a comment that's very thought provoking. But what we'd like to see is, we would like to see more participation. The way that webinars are conducted, the only way that you can do that is to interact with us through the chat room or through the question and answer button that you have down.
Thank you very much. So, I don't think that's difficult at all.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And of course, for us to be guided, let us start formally our webinar session with an opening prayer. Would like to encourage everyone to bow down our heads and let's pray all together. Lord, we praise you for this webinar and your purpose for it. We know that when we gather together, you always have a divine agenda. We love you for that, Lord, that even when we have done what you have asked, the results are so much greater than we could ever have imagined. Even in failed attempts, your faithfulness continues to provide what we need. Our prayer today is that yours will be done through this event. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Steer our intentions to align with your righteous will. Remind us of your faithful provisions when our efforts fails us or fall short. May all glory go up to you when we reach the finish line and climb over benchmarks. Blanket us with your peace today, Father. Keep us physically safe and guard our hearts and minds from pride and selfishness. Keep love at the forefront of our minds today and a guiding light for all that we have set out to accomplish and celebrate. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Of course, to give the welcome remarks and to discuss the beginnings and overview of TIBFEE, I now give virtual floor to the Chairman of the Tourism Industry Board Foundation Incorporated, Maria Cristina Giacchino, Mam Tina.
Yes, thank you very much, Beth. I know there's quite a number of our participants are not members of TIBFEE. And so, this is an opportunity for us to actually market and see if you're interested to be a member of TIBFEE. But before we do that, I'd like to welcome you all to our fourth webinar. We're doing a series of webinars. In fact, you'll see later on, an invitation for you to actually join us in our fifth webinar. We're doing this as part of the 40th celebration of TIBFEE. And we have put in a lot of ideas. We have, our first webinar was about a glibber of hope. This was providing people who are in the tourism and hospitality industry an opportunity for them to see what's out there. Maybe because it was very challenging, we started this, we offered this webinar last July. Then last August, we had a webinar on, "It's okay to not be okay." This was about our practical, whether you do face-to-face, virtual, online. And this was interesting because you had government initiatives, private initiatives. Industry was actually part of the, those were delivering. And we had reactions from various stakeholders. We had people from industry, we had from students as well. We had from government, CHED was represented as well. And we also had providers of other training. Our third webinar was actually about, what was the topic that we had last month? It was about, what was our topic, Beth? I forgot.
Um, it's about health and wellness, about mental and spiritual connectivity.
A lot of the webinars that we're having right now is focused on skills up, upskilling. And it's very hardcore. And we felt that there was need for us to also focus on something that was about health or wellness. So, we had, we got somebody who was on physical wellness, her. We had somebody who spoke about nutrition. We had somebody who spoke about emotional and mental wellness and spiritual wellness as well. And it was very well liked. We had more than 400 delegates who actually attended that workshop, that webinar. This particular work, webinar is going to focus on transitioning now. How do we start? When are you, it's not as if you're gonna be opening tomorrow, but at least you're doing some steps already on how to open this. So, let's now go to TIBFEE. Where did we start? We actually started way before anyone, maybe a lot of our audience were not born in 1980, but I was already born there. It was originally called Hotel and Restaurant Industry Board. But because of the very limited sectors that were addressed, only hotel and restaurant, it was changed in 1991 to become the Tourism Industry Board Foundation Incorporated to encompass all the different sectors of the tourism industry. This conversion was approved in 1992. And we are the only surviving industry board from, all the way from the NMYC days to now that is TESDA. In fact, we're working on, TESDA has actually acknowledged us to be the only surviving up to now in the TESDA. So, we're, we're part of their consultation process. We actually have a workshop with the Bayan Academy. We're very happy to revisit our vision. And now, this is our new vision to, we ambition to be highly professional education, training, research, and development institutions that are responsive to the competency needs and workforce requirements of the tourism industry by 2025. Our mission is something that we will be able to deliver, to converge government, industry, education, and training sectors and facilitating tourism human resource development. And we've got members, associate members, individual members, and institutional members who actually are part of this. Last March 19, 2019, we were actually inducted into the office. We had no less than the Secretary of Tourism, Secretary Berna, together with the board members of TIBFEE. Right now, the TIBFEE composition, we, I represent the Hotel and Restaurant Association of the Philippines as the associate member, board member. We also have ARM, Paseos, Army, Noreen Central, the Labor. We also have PTA and Filtoa, who are part of the board currently. We have our Board of Advisors from the Department of Tourism, TESDA, as well as UPAIT. And all of this actually, we tried, these are all volunteer work for everyone in the board. What is something that is uniquely TIBFEE focused right now is the role of TIBFEE with regards to the ASEAN MRA or Mutual Recognition Arrangement on Tourism Professional, which was implemented more than what, eight years ago, where it was finally signed by all the ASEAN member states. The National Tourism Organization here in the Philippines is Department of Tourism. The Tourism Professional Certification Board is TESDA. And the National Tourism Professional Board is TIBFEE. All of us actually work together. We have a lot of our activities coming together. In fact, next week, October 22, we will be having a convergence together with TESDA, CHED, BEP Ed, and TIBFEE. And the Department of Tourism is taking the lead for this. Yes, Beth? Our TIBFEE composition is composed of private members, associate. These are organizations that have what, institutional members and individual members. So, the likes of HRAP, ARM, Filtoa would be part of our associate members, membership. Our institutional membership would be those that are uniquely part of an organization, like maybe LPU. We have also what, Bayview Hotel. We also have other organizations. We also have institutional membership members. Beth, can you just go one slide before? Individual members, and these are people who are interested about becoming a member. They're all tourism stakeholders. We have from government, DOT, TESDA, UPAIT. And of course, Labor is also presented in this, in this organization. If you're interested to be a member, please scan the QR code that we have here. And we have the different fees for now. And that's it, I think. If you want to get in touch with us, do visit our website. And you also can email our secretariat. And right now, the office in UPAIT is actually closed because everybody is working from home. So, thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you very much, Mam Tina. So, to all our participants asking how they can become members, so you can become a member individual, you can become an institutional member, there are several layers or types of membership for TIBFEE. And please, we encourage everyone to visit their website. All the materials that we have are already posted in the TIBFEE website. Thank you very much, Mam Tina, for that warm opening remarks and for giving us an overview of what TIBFEE is all about. Now, we now get to the, the most important part of the program. It's an honor for me to introduce our speakers for this morning. They are the founding team behind 30 Minute Talks that are focused on one objective, that is to provide access to the best possible expertise. So, as the COVID-19 pandemic rolled out across the world, they founded the 30 Minute Talks to bring insights and expertise to educators, students, and industry practitioners around the world. Given their collective background in both the hospitality and tourism industries and education, they seek to not only provide insights on current issues relating to the industry or educational delivery, but also to be a bridge between the two. We always say that it's always a date, every Wednesday, 2:00 PM at 30 Minute Talks. And they brought us to different parts of the world already. You name it, Macau, Las Vegas, Hawaii. And of course, last Wednesday, they took us to incredible India. So, we thanked them for giving all of this information to all our students and faculty members. It's an honor to have them here this morning at TIBFEE webinar session, our fourth in celebration of the four decades of TIBFEE. And of course, to introduce our first speaker, okay? We have Dr. Andy Nasraship. So, he has 25 years of experience in Las Vegas hotel industry. He, he was once a senior executive, he held senior executive hospitality positions in Las Vegas. And he spent 20 years in the academy, specifically at the University of Nevada, also in, in the US. A former member of Singapore Tourism Consultative Committee. He's the past president of Epa Kring, opening dean of US University Branch Campus in Singapore. And the last position he held is Senior Vice President of International Relation at Taylor's University, Malaysia. It's a pleasure to have you here at TIBFEE. I give you the floor now, Dr. Andy Nasraship.
Thank you, Lily Beth. That's a very nice introduction. We always appreciate that. And thank you, Tina, for the kind words about 30 minutes. And we're, we're very happy to be here to share some of our ideas and concepts with the group today. And if Lily Beth, if you'll let me share a little bit, I'm gonna turn on my, let me get, let me share my screen and get set up here. And that'll take one minute. And while we're doing that, let's see here. Okay, one second here. This is the first time, you know, the, one of the things that we've learned during 30 minutes. And we've done it every week for the last 26 weeks actually. And we find out every week, you will find something goes wrong. So, that's one of the things that you have to be prepared for, is that things change so quickly in our industry today that you always have to be ready. Now, what's gonna happen today? And I hope you can, can you see our, my screen now, I hope?
Yes, Dr. Randy, you can see it very clear.
Okay, and so, today, we're gonna talk about three different, we're gonna talk about three different areas. I'm gonna talk a little bit about marketing today. And the marketing that you do today is gonna have to change a little bit just because of the way the world is. Mr. Alan Williams is gonna talk about operational concept. He has a lot of great experiences running businesses and showing some different concepts from around the world. And finally, then Professor Perry Hopson will give strategies that everyone should be following as we go through this session. So, join me as we go on this little journey and here we, here we begin. So, as we mentioned before, we can't wait until the end. I don't think anybody can say, "I'm gonna sit in my business and wait until we have a vaccine, until we have, until everybody's healthy and everybody's ready to go, and then I'm gonna open my business." That's not just, it's just not gonna work. You cannot wait that long. The economy is suffering around the world. Cases continue to rise, but also recoveries are rising too. The death rate is very low. So, there is a certain point where we have to have that balance between the economy and our safety from the COVID-19. And so, I think that it's necessary for businesses to start looking at how to reopen. And first, let me show you about what I talk about, and it's about marketing. Marketing is one of those things that everybody knows about and everybody tries to do. But there's gonna be a need for changes when you talk about marketing today. So, let's take a look at some of the basics. I have always learned that you have to identify your customers. That's the first step in any marketing plan. And when you identify your customers, you have to look, am I looking for older people? Am I looking for younger people? What kind of customers do I want to come into my business? And so, today, that's the first step. The second step is how are you going to attract those people? Now, this is one of those things that has changed tremendously over the years. In the past, you would send out a flyer on a piece of paper. Now, you use social media, you use Facebook, you use email, all these different kinds of communication techniques that will allow you to communicate. And this is the one area where a lot of businesses don't take advantage of understanding who their customers are. People gathering email addresses. I know businesses that are open, and I've been going there for regularly for many, many months, if not years. And they opened, but they didn't tell me. So, how can I go back to a business that I don't even know is open if they don't communicate with me and give me an update? The second part of that is they have to tell me what they're doing to make it safe for me to come back. Let's talk about the next one, retaining. Now, you identified your customers. You said, "We're gonna give you great food. We're gonna give you great services. We're gonna bring you to our business and it's gonna be safe. We're gonna wear our mask, we're gonna do all these procedures." And you know, when the people get there, they're gonna look around and say, "Are you really doing what you promised? You said you were gonna do." This is a key point for any operator. If you're going to promise that you're gonna have a safe premise, then your number one responsibility as an owner and operator is to provide that safe place for your customers. And if you can do that, they will come back. Now, the first three there is always fun, identifying, attracting, retaining. That's how do you keep your customers? But then after, and this is gonna be the one, the customers of your past may not be the customers of your future. You have to look at the customers that you have, and you have to determine, well, are we making money? Is this customer group that we're trying to attract the best one for us, for us to make a successful business? Because then you have to evaluate the whole situation and say, "Maybe we need to change." So, I want you to keep these concepts in mind as we talk about the marketing for your pre, post-COVID-19 business. You have to relook at what you used to do and see if it will continue to work in the future. You also have to understand what you're selling. Now, many of you go on trips and you'll see some artists painting these pictures on the, on the street. And you'll say, "Wow, look, let's buy one of those pieces of art." Now, is it really art? No, it's not really art. It's, it's a memory of where you went traveling. So, you have to understand what are you selling? Now, this guy, you could tell by this picture, is there somewhere in Spain. He's selling the bull, the bull fights or whatever, and flamingo dancing. That's a memory that you're selling. So, what are you selling is one of the things you have to sit down and determine now that you're gonna reopen. Are you selling food? Well, anybody can sell food, but the real question is, are you selling comfort? You've all heard the concept of comfort food. So, when people come to your restaurant, why are they coming there? Is it to grab a quick lunch? Or is it to relax and escape from the world for a few minutes as they eat their comfort food to reduce the stress that they have from the stressful times we have during COVID-19? So, that's a, that's a key point. How about a hotel? Are you selling just a room? Well, I'm gonna be traveling today. You know, I'm looking for safety. I'm looking for a place that's gonna provide me a safe place to spend the night. Those things are the keys that you have to see. So, when you're selling, just don't come, don't sell your room. Sell the fact that you have safety in your rooms. And when people travel, that's one of the fundamental practices of the hotel business, is to provide a people, a place, a safe place when they travel around the world. Now, are you selling service? This is a good one. You know, whatever business you're in, are you selling a service? Or are you selling wellness? People wanna feel like they're gonna improve themselves. Are they improving in their health? Are they improving their, their finances? Are they prove, what are they improving when they go to your business? How are you helping them be better than they were the day before? So, though, the points of this section is, yes, we have to market to people, but you also have to reconsider, what are you selling now that the times have changed? So, the review, it comes down to, if you add them all together, it's comfort marketing. People want to be comfortable. They are scared. We did a short pre, pre-show survey. And the largest percentage of people that said, the question was, "How often have you gone out to dinner in the last month?" Almost 38, 40% of those people said, "Not at all," because they're afraid to go out. And we cannot live in an environment of fear and be successful in business if people are afraid to go out. So, comfort marketing. You, as a business, number one goal is to say, "We are creating a safe and comfortable environment for you to come as you escape from your homes, from the captivity or the boredom that you have been there for the last six months." It has to change. And you, if you wanna be successful, you're gonna have to provide a comfortable place for people to go. Now, let's go the next, I'll give you one example. This is actually a study I came up with just a couple of years, last year. They did a study on a chair. Think about this. You have a business? What kind of chair do you have? And they found that if you have a chair that is comfortable for your guests, then that shows that you care for them, that shows that they're comfortable, and they're inviting, even if that's not what they were looking for. And there's a note there about ambient sound. See, the quality of the sound in your environment is comfortable too. If it's too noisy, if it's too, too crazy, people are not comfortable, they're stressed out. But if you do things to reduce the sound, provide the right kind of music, depending on what kind of business you have, all of those things provide what we call a comfortable environment. So, a simple example, but a very good research study that, that people did in order net. Now, why is this all important? Well, if you're the typical restaurant or business, you know, you might have 156 seats right in the, in the old days. But after COVID-19 rules came, then what happened? You had to reduce your seating. So, now you only have 84 seats. So, what's your goal? Well, at the minimum, you wanna make sure you fill those 84 seats. And the only way you're going to fill that is to provide social distancing, clean restrooms. You're gonna have to provide face shields for your employees, masks for your employees, worn properly, taking temperatures. All of these things have to become standard operating procedures if you wanna fill the 84 seats you have. Now, as time goes on, you, the numbers of seats will grow and grow, but you have already established yourself as a positive, comfortable operation. Now, this was actually a picture, this is off, this is actually an office center. You know, everybody's working from home, they may never go back. And so, there's office buildings that are sitting out there that you could potentially turn into a restaurant. Why? Because each office could become a private dining room, socially distanced by the design. Just a thought. I've seen some restaurants around the world that have this concept. And so, the, everyone gets their own room. Everyone is very isolated, it's very private, but it's a lot of fun because you have your own place. And each one is designed a little bit different, just an idea. And the reason I show you that one is because when you look at a restaurant, this was one I used in a presentation several months ago. You look at this restaurant, so you see the restaurant with some tables on the outside. I see a parking lot that can be turned into a restaurant and eating area, especially when, since outdoor eating is a safe way during COVID-19. Who does this? Well, let me show you a picture. This is a picture from Singapore. This is a picture from Singapore. He lived in Singapore for seven years. This is La Pasah. And this is a street that during the day is a very busy traffic thoroughfare. Cars up back and forth, but at a certain point, they close the street. They put tables on the street and they turned it into an evening restaurant. And so this is one example of people eating outside, taking advantage of space that typically you wouldn't even think of using and turning it into a successful operation. Now, this would be for COVID nineteen, this photo. But if there was spaced out more, the restaurants, everything would be exactly the same. Except outdoor eating is now much more popular, even for the people that go out because they don't want to eat inside a restaurant. They want to eat outside because it's safer because of the ventilation. So a good example. Now, what should you do in your business right now? Well, the first thing I want you to look at is your neighborhood. Your, you know, if your business is there, I want you to look at where the people are. There's office buildings around you, there's communities around you. Those are your new customers. It's just like hotels that have, or had international customers coming to their hotels. But today, there's a lot of hotels that are doing what we call staycations. They want people in the local community to come to the hotels. That's exactly the same concept. So what you have to do is you have to look at your neighborhood and now don't look at them as neighbors anymore. Look to them as potential new customers or bringing them back. So you have past customers that you have to try to recontact with to say you're open again. You have current customers that you have to ensure that you're providing a safe place for them to eat and enjoy your services or food. And then the last one I have here is you're going to have to offer a deal. There is no doubt, if you want people to come back, leave their homes and come to your business, you're going to have to give them something that first time that's going to wow them. It's going to be not two for one, it's three for one, ten for one. I don't care what you do. It's a matter of you have to do something that people will talk about, people will understand. People will say, we got to go out and take advantage of that deal so that we can get back into business. If everyone stays home, then our economy will never improve. So as a challenge to all of you here, we have a couple, over a couple hundred people in this room. I'm going to ask you, go out. Find a restaurant or a business in your neighborhood and all of you say, we're going to go there. Not all two hundred of you, just, just twenty of you. And every week, go to that restaurant once a week. And you tell them, if you want me to keep coming back, then you have, this is, I, I noticed your people weren't wearing masks. They have to wear shields. I noticed you didn't clean properly. Tell them what they're doing wrong. And if they don't fix it, then go someplace else. But in the meantime, you have to support your local operations. And I live in Subic Bay. The SBMA has done an excellent job in communicating with the residents and the people in this area about the number of cases and who's having it. See, that makes me feel comfortable because I know what's going on. People want to know what's going on. And then the restaurants here that are open have done an excellent job following the regulations that have been set up by the SBMA. And those restaurants, you feel comfortable going there because they're taking your temperature, they're writing your information down. The tables are distanced, the people are wearing shields. All of those things say, yeah, let's go out to dinner. Where are we going to go? We're going to go to the place that follows the rules and provides a safe premise. So it's very comfortable. And it's, and a last note in Subic Bay, I think Subic Bay is going to be a future place for people to go to be comfortable from Manila. Because Manila, you got ten million people there. Well, Subic Bay is one of those places where people are going to go to escape from the masses of Manila and to get some fresh air and eat in those outdoor restaurants that we have. So it's a great place. So who's doing happy stuff? You know, this is Starbucks, Starbucks is a perfect example. These are comfort type products. You know, your pumpkin coffee, your, I don't know what this stuff, caramel, salted caramel mocha. They make it look like it's, you have to have it. It's comfortable and that's what's attracting you to their operation. Let me give you a couple of other examples. Now, this is another example of co-branding, co-selling. Now, this is just an example, I took a picture of a, this is a, of, off the web from a grocery store, you know? What do you go to the grocery store for? You buy groceries. Well, what if I told you you could buy shoes there? See, some businesses have found out that people are trying to reduce the number of trips they make. They don't want to go to the shoe store, they don't want to go to the grocery store, they don't want to go to ten different stores. They want to go to one place. So in the US, I think it's DWS Shoe, which is a big shoe company. They partnered with a grocery store and have put their shoes inside the grocery store. So somebody can go shopping in a grocery store and also buy their shoes. Those kinds of co-branding, co-selling. So if you're, if you have a business in your neighborhood and they're selling something and you're selling something, help work together and share those services so that you can both promote the same thing. Those are, those are good concepts to have. So what's the goal? The goal is we need to change the way we operate to ensure customer safety and increase revenues. So you have to look at everything you've done. You have to say, how can we do it better? How can we do it to make your customers feel like they're comfortable and leaving their homes and coming back after COVID nineteen? And COVID nineteen is going to be around for a while. We asked, there's going to be vaccines coming, there's going to be better medicines, better therapeutics. All those things are good, but it's going to be around for a while until the vaccine is spread around the world. So open up your businesses, clean your businesses, train your employees, do all those things and get ready to open. Because if you wait too long, then it's not going to be any opportunity for your business to open. And it's going to be a challenge. So with that said, I'd like to say Thirty Minute Talks, this is just a quick brush, a quick commercial for next week. We talk about, we're going to talk next week, we're going to talk about the link between culture and COVID nineteen. And if you want to join our, our session next week, feel free to join us and go to our website at Thirty Minute Talks and you can register there. And I believe that they're going to have a question on this, on the survey too, where you can sign up for our mailing list. And that is the end of my presentation. Beth, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Andy. That's a very insightful discussion. From the perspective of marketing, we cannot really wait for things to return back to normal. We have to do something. And of course, we have to offer comfortable marketing to all the stakeholders for our businesses to, you know, proceed as it is, right?
I agree, I agree. I think that's going to be a key is, is in order for people to leave their homes again, you're going to have to promise them a safe and comfortable place to go. That's a good, great.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Andy. I think we have lots of questions coming in after your brief talk about the marketing. And at this point, again, we will have the second speaker. It's an honor again to, to welcome Dr. Perry Hobson here in our TV webinar session. Currently, he is the Pro Vice Chancellor at Sunway University, Malaysia. He obtained his BS degree from Oxford Brookes University in UK, masters from the University of Massachusetts and his PhD from Southern Cross University, Australia. He is the Editor-in-Chief of the SSCI in the Journal of Vacation Marketing for over twenty years. He's a member of the ICE accreditation body. So this International Center of Excellence and accrediting a body based in Australia. He is also a past president of the EPOCREE and a fellow of the Council of Australian Universities for Tourism and Hospitality Education. He's also the honorary fellow of the Council for Hospitality Management Education in UK. Everyone, it's an honor to have Professor Perry Hobson, Dr. Perry.
Well, hello and good morning, everybody. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you for that great introduction, Beth. And you know, I always enjoy the opportunity to be able to present. I've been to the Philippines many times. So as you've heard, I'm based here at Sunway University here in Malaysia. And the, as I said, I've, I've been able to visit the Philippines on many different occasions. So a big warm welcome, a salamatan from all of us here. And it's wonderful to have this opportunity to share with so many people the, some of the challenges that we're facing. And you know, what I want to share with you so much today is also the global perspectives, the ways that we can do things, some of the strategies that we can deploy and ways that we can go forward from here. So let me just work out, because I can see that, so I've got to see if I can get control of the screen here. There we go. There we are. So look, the, the current situation here very much in, in, in Malaysia and for many different organizations around the world is a clearly a challenging one. And clearly, the situation that we're faced with is very different around the world. So in some situations, we're seeing the world reopening very quickly. China, for example, it seemed to have moved very, very fast. Other situations are much more restrained and constrained. So here in Malaysia, we've just identified some different red zones, which we're now dealing with. And so those hotspots are going to be, have to be closed down with enforced restrictions. In other parts of the world, we're seeing much more rise in cases. So the challenge for many businesses is where do we go from here? How do, to reopen, what are those strategies? And some people often say to me, well, you're an academic, what do you know about this kind of stuff? Well, again, I'm a bit of a bookhead, but I like to read very extensively. I like to look at current management literature. And my goal, I see very much, is to bring that to you. Because our job very much in education is being able to look, to analyze, to develop informed opinions. And I think through the work we've been doing with Thirty Minutes Talks, those are some of the focuses that we wanted to bring. Now, obviously universities themselves have been at the forefront of the pandemic as well. And, and head of the management team here, we're faced with very large organizations, with many students that we cannot bring onto campus anymore. So universities around the world have also been on the forefront of having to deal with these very challenging situations. Now, in the old days, we used to say, don't leave home without it. And, and this was a theme of actually American Express. Today, when we talk about don't leave home without it, we're actually talking about something quite different. Hand sanitizers, glass, gloves and masks. So our world has changed very, very dramatically. We're going to have to learn how to adapt. And as Dr. Andy's already been pointing out this morning, it's how businesses adapt and change to this new normal. Sadly, the reality is that this virus is going to be around for some considerable time. We've already seen that and businesses have made various decisions. So Changi Airport decided to close their Terminal Two and to bring forward renovations. They put out that terminal out of action for a year and a half. I'm originally based for many years in Australia. Qantas has decided not to fly any international flights until the middle of next year. Reading the government papers the other day, they're essentially expecting the border restrictions and quarantining will go on through to the end of twenty twenty one. And that's based on, even if we find a vaccine, how fast you can distribute it and so forth. So the realities are that the situation is going to be with us for a while. And so whilst many businesses have done something in the very immediate short term, we've now got to start thinking about what this new normal is going to look like. Because there's going to be many quarters of business operations before that. Back in April this year, I think the very level-headed German Chancellor Angela Merkel was, when everyone was saying this is going to be over by the middle of the year and so forth. She was being very clear. She said, not in the final phase of the pandemic, but still at the beginning. Now, remember, this was back in April, this was six months ago. So we all want to get out of this, but we have to temper our enthusiasm of leaving this situation with the realities we are facing. And so I think this is, I know this is difficult and obviously a lot of people don't want to hear this, but this is the reality in many situations in many countries. However, there is light at the end of the tunnel and we are seeing countries who are getting on top of the situation. So I don't mean to paint a picture of gloom or doom, but just realism about the situation. Because clearly COVID has been devastating for businesses. And in many cases, we've got to say where to from here. Now, COVID has emptied our airports, our buses, our train stations. And so this is a very challenging situation for many, many businesses. And of course, many of them, as you've heard from Dr. Andy already, particularly in hotels, beaches and restaurants have, have been empty. And so the challenge is, how do we bring people back into those businesses? How do we restrategize what it is we do? And so it's just not the tactical plans, but it's having some thought-through strategy, which is very challenging at the moment. Simply because as COVID moves around, spikes up, we get on top of it. These are the challenges that we're seeing. But we don't want to end up like these businesses. We don't want to end up on the scrappy. Now, of course, sometimes businesses are making those decisions, they're bringing forward those decisions. So many of the cruise ships, for example, have decided to decide to scrap many of their older ships at the moment. I think five or six have just been beached in Turkey for breaking up. So for some businesses, this is bringing forward decisions that were, dare I say, already in the pipeline. Now, the challenge is, first of all, is to think positive. After all, none of us want to become roadkill. It doesn't matter whether you're in education, we're in business, that is reality. But we've got to think positively despite the negative situation that we're faced with. Clearly, a lot of businesses are sinking. And if we look around the world, most of the economic data reports that in quarter two of this year, many economies were declining between eighteen to twenty-two percent or that sort of ilk. I suspect Q three data is going to show something similar. And of course, the challenge now is, as we look through this, is to say, what is the future of tourism and hospitality actually going to look like? And is this a longer-term vision? Are we going to have to go through some medium-term steps? And I think that's where we're going to be faced with. So the challenge is, for many businesses and organizations, we need to ask for help. We need to think about our potential. We need to think about where we can get that from. But it's also about being able to constructively engage with the situation. This is no time for throwing the towel. So the challenge is now, how do we go about doing that? So of course, at the beginning now, in this initial phase, for many businesses, it has been purely about survival. And so the challenge now is, how do we go forward out of that? So many businesses have been put into hibernation. And you can see that with a lot of airlines, with a lot of hotels. So it's just a matter of being able to pay the rent, keep the doors open for the short term. So the question is, as markets have changed? Because for some businesses, dare I say, the pandemic has been good. If you're Amazon, if you're Netflix, these have been good times. If you're designing office, home office equipment. So we have to think about how consumer demand has shifted and changed. How can we now take advantage of that and move out of that hibernation phase into a stabilization before looking ahead to a more of a growth phase? Now, I'm just going to work through today, limited time here, but some, some tips for rethinking your business. And I'd like to thank the National Bank of Canada for, I thought, which I thought were five quite, quite salient and key points to make about what to do. First is, of course, is to learn how to tackle the current situation. So in that is, the first thing is to say, how do you do that? And as I've already mentioned, in many cases, it's been about sheer survival. Let's look at a couple of examples. Flight Center has become one of the world's largest travel agencies. And Flight Center had close to a thousand stores in Australia, which were relatively small population, twenty-five million was quite, quite extensive. And it had another five hundred stores outside of Australia, very focused on being face-to-face, less of an online presence. Now, in their case, the, for the owners, a guy who's quite an industry icon in Australia, a guy called Screw Turner, is trying to work out what to do. And as he said, we have to accept that there's going to be outbreaks. He's accepting that business. He's taken the painful decisions to torn a K bits of his business, close down a lot of shops, to work out how to shrink his business so that he can position it to get through this before it's going for growth. So these are the realities that different organizations are having to face with. And across the airline industry, we can see many different examples of this. This is just one of many. I know that Philippine Airlines is in a similar situation. Air New Zealand has worked out that it said it will have to shrink. It will probably only be about seventy percent of its size. And I think even now, they're saying that's quite optimistic. So they've had to cut routes to work out how they can get the business back to the essentials, to what is the core to the actual business. Now, of course, for some businesses, it's been working out, what can you do in the short term? And of course, there's many innovative examples about what's going on. And whilst I don't think these are, are something that I would make your long-term business strategy, at least I want to use some examples of businesses who are a little bit out of the box in the short term. So Qantas Airlines in Australia made the difficult decision to retire all its seven four sevens. British Airways has done something similar, thirty-one planes it has decided to scrap. Now, in the case of Qantas, what they did, they're scratching their heads, they realized that those planes had a lot of those drink carts, they had a lot of excess stock sitting in the warehouse, what to do with that? So they simply loaded up those carts and have been selling them. And this is from their website. So fifteen hundred Australian dollars, that's about, about something in the order of eleven hundred US if you want your fully stocked bar cart. Now, the interesting thing is, they sold out of all these within two hours. So again, there are interesting ways and innovative ways you can start to look at things. Now, don't get me wrong, this was a very short-term one-off. Other businesses have been looking at this to say, how can we rethink what we're doing? And airlines in particular have now been looking to their food service. So Thai Airways, for example, has reopened what had been a staff canteen in Thailand. And that's now been reopened because they need to keep their chefs and their staff that they've got employed. Because what else are they to do? So we're now seeing a number of different organizations who are beginning to rethink what they can do. So you're seeing this with other airlines. They want to keep their customers engaged. As Dr. Andy already mentioned today, how do you let your customers know that you're still there? I used to fly a lot. In in past years, I've done as many as sixty-five flights in a year. Well, I'm not hardly going anywhere internationally at the moment, in fact, not at all. But how do you make sure that your customers remember you? So Eva Air, for example, in Taiwan, what they've introduced is their flights to nowhere, trying to make sure they engage with customers to use their service, to show them how airlines have become safe and secure. So that as Dr. Andy mentioned earlier today, when people are saying, oh, I'm not sure if I should fly, it's a bit worrying. People can say, I've been there, I've seen what they're doing. It has got to be about keeping your brand in front of people's top of mind, keeping your brand in front of customers, and also making sure that you're tangibilizing what it is that you're doing as a business to show that you still exist, that you are still relevant. Now, some airlines have been taking this a step further. About a week or so ago, Singapore Airlines decided it was not going to do flights to nowhere. They said that's rather environmentally unsustainable, so why just fly people around? What they've decided to do is open up their training center. So if you want to learn to look how to do makeup like a Singapore girl, they now offer makeup classes. They've taken their training center, they've parked an A three eighty and so you can go for dinner and have that first-class experience that maybe you could never afford to do when you had to fly with them. But when it's on the ground, you can afford to have that experience. Or alternatively, because Singapore Airlines has got such high-quality chefs, what they've also done is to come up with a plan that you can have your private Singapore Airlines chef come to your home. So there are other ways of rethinking what it is that you do in innovative ways. Other businesses I've mentioned have decided to look ahead. So for example, Air Baltic, which is based in Europe, they've decided to redesign their fleet, realizing that in fact, they're probably going to need smaller planes going forward. So they've decided to ditch all their seven-three-sevens and to go with A two hundred and twenty planes. Now, these are smaller configuration planes, but their idea is that as they come out of this pandemic, they can see people want to fly, but they believe that it's going to be much smaller numbers that you've been seeing in the past, which is why many airlines have decided to get rid of their seven-four sevens and A three eighties. So again, these are major strategic decisions. So again, I'm hopefully showing how you're matching strategy with some short-term tactics. But those tactics in the short term, keeping you longer term. Singapore Airlines remembers wants to keep in mind in front of its its customers, keeps it brand relevant to its core loyal customer bases in Singapore. Now, other destinations are already working out how to do plans for destinations. Here in Malaysia, Penang, many months ago, started its process of doing that to work out what is its new normal. And domestic tourism has restarted. In fact, just this weekend, I was able to go off to the island of Langkawi. And again, I was flying with, I flew with Air Asia, I flew with Malaysian, and I've been seeing firsthand the sorts of things that they're doing. And just to show you, for example, they gave me my flight kit with my mask and even my immunity travel booster. So again, tangibilizing what it is that they are doing. So reflect on the business. What is your underlying strength as a business and as a manager? So what people may see is the outer you, what is the inside? What's the core to your organization? And these airlines and other businesses have been doing that. Who is essential personnel? What is the core competence of the business? And how can you take that forward in a new way? Because you can have new ideas, we can recycle old ideas, and sometimes perhaps their time has come. So the challenge here is how we move from thinking things are impossible to making things possible. So working here at Sunway University, for a long time, we thought and took the view that going online was not something we would do. That was not who we were. We were not an online university. We were a face-to-face university. In fact, it had been said to me that Perry, we don't even want to do blended learning because that's not what our students and parents are paying for. They're paying for face-to-face. Well, suddenly in March this year, online learning was the only thing that parents and students were paying for. So the challenge was, we had to say and remove our thinking that something was impossible to put in all our lectures, all our workshops, even our labs that we've got in our science area to go online. And so that demanded a massive rethink about how we could do that. Now, of course, those traditional tools apply. You may just have to put them on turbocharge, which we did earlier this year. But looking forward, the question is, how can you plan? It's looking forward to saying, what are the the goals you've now got? How do you revise those? And these are painful decisions that many businesses are having to make. Now, clearly, technology is a key part of that. As I've already mentioned, there has been a lot of growth. In fact, if you look at the US stock market at the moment, twenty-five percent of the value of the US tech market is in just, I believe, something like eight companies. The value is humongous between those companies such as Amazon, et cetera. So their time has come. So the question is, how to refocus, rethink, but clearly, technology is going to be part of that. So how do you make that part of what you're doing? Now, a key part of that for step two is to strengthen your online presence. So for many organizations, there was no online presence before. Many organizations didn't have a website. In fact, it often amazed me that for many businesses, you couldn't even find out a restaurant's menu before you walk through the door. Now, how can we rethink that? Now, for many organizations, it's a question of how to revise your digital offering and pinpoint your weaknesses so that you can find out a way to maximize and to optimize what it is. So what is the customer journey now? And that customer journey, as Dr. Andy's already pointed out, has changed. People are not going out as often. They want to see how they can coordinate things. How can you give them as much information as possible before they get there? How can they do this with contactless payment? How do you make the whole system different to what it was, but to put it within today's parameters? And of course, that may open up your business to new markets, markets that may never have been there before. Now, even when it comes to something like shopping, for example, IBM put out a report recently saying that online shopping has had a jump of at least five years in the last five months. In other words, it is turbocharged what has happened. We saw a shift to online shopping in many parts of the world, and that has now been speeded up. So how are shopping malls going to reinvent themselves before they're going to become dusty corners, as you can see on the slide? The question now becomes, how do we rethink this? Now, we're dealing with a generation of digital natives who are used to being online. We are now going to have to work out how to embrace technology. So in many ways, traveling tourism was ahead. We became one of the largest industries online. The challenge is that for many businesses, we weren't in that space. So the question now is, how do we embrace that more and take those online for websites and bookings, which obviously hotels we're very familiar with, but now to make that more embedded in actual operations within hotels and restaurants? Because we've got to find new ways to reach out with that technology. Now, as Dr. Andy has also already mentioned today, we don't want to lose your past customers. And there's got to be ways to stay connected with them because their needs have changed in the short term. And longer term, you don't want to lose those relationships. So what else is it you can do to stay connected with them? Oops, earlier, earlier this year, I was mindful of this story that I came up with from a Chinese travel agent. And what they decided to do, that they have soaring that over ten thousand travel agencies are closed. What this one did was it decided to send food parcels to many of their customers, reminding them of the places they had been and the trips they had taken and to get them thinking about traveling again. And as we've already seen from what's happened in the last week, China's tourism has really bounced back very quickly. So don't lose those past customers. Now, think ahead because again, the technology is changing. And what we've been used to with our current technology may not be how it is in the future. And so we can already see with the rolling out of five G, which is going to occur very quickly, because the demand for online has been so boosted, many telecommunications companies are struggling to keep up. And I know the Philippines is particularly challenged with its connectivity in that respect. But those countries are also likely to make a huge leap forward in terms of what is going to happen. So consider the opportunities. So those opportunities may be online, they may be redesigning your business, they may be giving you ways to have new ideas about how you can run your business. Even all businesses are rethinking. So Thomas Cook, which was founded in the UK over nearly two hundred years ago, closed down last year. About two weeks ago, it announced it was reopened, but this time as a totally online travel agency. So it has had to rethink its business, rethink, and launch itself anew in the middle of a pandemic. So it is time to think differently. It is time to think innovatively, to seize those opportunities. Because there is innovation out there, there's opportunities to take. Let me finish today with one example of how you can do that and to think about companies who have done that successfully. So I just want to turn to a Malaysian company, Air Asia. Now, in many respects, they're having a tough time in the sense that they expanded overseas. Air Asia in Japan has just announced that it's going to close down. Air Asia in India, again, is is in a challenging situation. But again, both of those were startups. Now, here in Malaysia, what they've realized is that they've, there's other ways for them to sell and to cross-sell. They're not selling so much on the planes anymore. So how now can they take their duty-free sales and make that at-home delivery, which they were already doing before? So just think about this for a moment. As I've mentioned earlier, for many airlines, airline food, airline food, sorry, was not something that people ever looked forward to. In fact, you could go and find all sorts of complaints about terrible airline food. So if I said to you several years ago, let's start a restaurant that offers only airplane food, you probably have told me I was nuts. Now, what Air Asia interestingly did was that they have just reopened, opened last year, end of last year, their first restaurant, which is called Santan, which was based on their menu that they've used on the plane. Now, this opened up in KL, they've now started opening up several sites. In fact, there's one very close to my office at the university. And you can begin to see what they have done is to think outside the box. They're looking to franchise them, to open up a hundred of these Santan stores. Again, the menu is very simple. They've gone with a franchising model. And you can begin to see how they have begun to do things differently. So during this pandemic, it is time that we've got to look for those green shoots because things will probably not go back to the way they were in twenty nineteen for an awful long time. So the challenge is, how do we look for those green shoots now? Because whilst it may look bleak, what you need is to find one bright idea, a way that will get your business back into that growth trajectory. So again, it's time to follow through with those those tips, to think about how you can rethink and particularly how to rethink your communication. Because that is going to be an important part of how it's going to be done. So I hope today, you've got to start thinking about how you can think outside the box a little bit. Because it may look bleak, but as you can see, you need one bright idea and that this will helpfully get things to grow for your business. Beth, thanks very much. I hope that's at least given some strategic planning and thought and some encouragement to different businesses in terms of what their thinking might be. And I look forward to getting questions later on. Okay.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perry. You've shared a lot of strategies for businesses to to reopen. So some of the few words that still are very critical at this time would be adaptability, innovation, creativity. We shouldn't really wait for, you know, things to, you know, to to get better. But we have to think of ways on how we can, you know, make it work for our businesses and our enterprises. And of course, we want to thank our participants who posted already a number of questions in our Q and A chat box. Thank you very much. And of course, at this point, I would also like to acknowledge, before I introduce the next speaker, like to acknowledge the presence of the Tourism Industry Board Foundation Board members. I can see in the participants, there is the President of Army, Dr. Gloria Bacon Wong Si. Good morning, Mom. And to the rest of our supporters from the Department of Tourism and from TESDA. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to introduce our third speaker. Mr. Alan Williams is a Senior Hire Consultant for Higher Education Leadership Institute or HELI. He has over twenty-seven years of experience in education industry. Seven years of that has been spent in the hospitality sector. He was once CEO of the Australian School of Tourism and Hotel Management. He passed President of APACR, I think that's a common denominator for all the three speakers. He's a Fellow of Tourism and Hospitality and Events Education. He's also a Fellow of the IAS or the this is again, Australian Accrediting Agency, a past President of Australian Council of Independent Vocational Colleges and a Treasurer of the Western Australian Private Education and Training Industry Association. It's an honor to welcome Mr. Alan Williams.
Thanks very much, Beth. And once again, welcome to all of the TIPF members and thank you for this opportunity to share our thoughts with you today. And I hope that everybody's enjoying the information that's been shared so far and that everybody's keeping safe. So as I share my screen and just prepare to share some of my thoughts with you. There we go, you should be able to see my screen now. Let me just say, welcome to all of the TIPF members and of course, to the special edition of, of, I guess, the Thirty Minute Talks presenters. And thank you for joining us, everybody. And indeed, thank you to those of you that join us regularly on on the Wednesday sessions. What I guess today, my my presentation is going to be a little bit about some operational concepts. So you've heard quite a lot about and some very great, good ideas from Dr. Andy, sharing his thoughts about comfort marketing and different ways and thoughts in which you can attract and retain customers and ways in which you can rethink your business and strategize your marketing in order to move from, I guess, closure or lockdown into an opening phase as as we go through the phases of of this pandemic. And Professor Perry Hopson just shared with you his thoughts about practical examples of different strategies being used by large and small businesses right throughout the tourism industry and indeed, the hospitality industry. And I think some of the key takeaways for me has been that now is not a time to be giving up. Now is the time to be planning for a for a recovery. It's time now to be more innovative, time to be more entrepreneurial for what we've termed this new normal period. And I think now really is the time to to think differently. And Perry mentioned you might find one good idea. Well, I'm hoping I'm going to give you a few little ideas that might culminate in the one big idea about how you go about making your businesses better or more profitable. So I think everyone is acutely aware of the impacts of the coronavirus that that it's had over the past nine months. And in many places, still continues to have, obviously, the pandemic has not gone away. The ongoing impact of this virus as a global health virus and now the resulting economic crisis is and continues to have devastating effects on the hospitality and tourism industry. So I'm going to be sharing with you operational concepts that the industry and in particular restaurants and bars might consider in order to assist those businesses to find ways to successfully reopen. Initially, I guess, as the the pandemic opened up in most countries, the the virus started by practically putting a stop to all restaurant and bar dining services, sit-down services. But as governments and industries are searching ways for the industry to restart and reopen and get people back to work, each country, each country, each region has taken a slightly different approach. Unfortunately, I guess, however, there's no matter what approach is being adopted or what stage of virus transmission the country or the region is in, whether you're in a restricted phase or lockdown phase, which is still in place in many countries and regions, or you're in the unrestricted phases, which has been adopted by some countries, and Sweden is probably one of the better examples of that. Or you've adopted the the Donut Model, which is a model being adopted by Amsterdam. Or you're in a phased or staged modeling approach, which pretty well Australia is is taking, taken to consider. The industry continues to struggle with a number of trading and limitations that have been encountered within each of these models. So there's going to be limitations and will continue to be limitations for some time. And therefore, the industry again will need to find ways, new ways to become more innovative and more adaptive in order to survive. And so some of these challenges include dealing with a second or potentially a third wave of infections resulting in whatever phase you're in, you having to take a backward step. Of course, we've already heard today, lack of customer confidence and consumer confidence. And how do we re-engage and and re-establish that confidence? There are now staffing issues as businesses have had to put staff off and are looking at ways in which they can attract and retain those staff and re-train those staff. And of course, there's significant harsh challenges that businesses are facing now with cash flow problems. And in many cases, we've already heard in businesses that are not and have not been traveling well, liquidity challenges. So these are only some of the challenges that I guess we know that hospitality operators are experiencing. So working on the assumption that there still remains many restrictions in place, let me share several operational concepts for restaurants and bars to consider to reopen. It is however extremely important to remember that during the pandemic, now and also during this time of reopening, the number one priority that I believe is still to keep your staff and your customers and suppliers safe. And there are various stages or phases to reopening that have been considered. And therefore, one of the key concepts is the social distancing being a key restriction. And it's really important for the industry and the industry operators to understand what those distancing guidelines are and that they vary significantly from country to country. But understand them and use them to your advantage or use them wisely to keep your staff and your customers as safe as you can. It is also especially important to be aware of the recommended industry guidelines for the hospitality tourism industry in your location and ensure that your staff and your guests are also aware of those guidelines. So not only to know them, but to essentially publish them. So let me firstly share with you what reopening is meant to be so far in the restaurant hospitality industry here in Australia, Western Australia where I live. And then I'll share with you some of those ideas and how they might be adapted or adopted to businesses in your regions. So in Western Australia, we've moved from a complete lockdown of Phase One to now being in Phase Four, and this is really over a six-phase strategy that the government has put in place some time ago. And what that means for the hospitality and tourism industry is that all food businesses and licensed premises in Stage Four can now open. And there are no restrictions on seated service, so people can now go back into the restaurant, sit down and have a meal. However, venues can't allow more than one person per two square meters. So for example, if your restaurant holds 100 people in its floor space, if its floor space spans 200 square meters as an example, sorry, you can only have 100 persons in the restaurant. Patrons can purchase alcohol with or without a meal, and they don't have to be seated. That, I guess, we've seen that being adapted across the world in different ways. And I know that the UK has just gone back to a scenario where people in pubs have to be seated in order to have an alcoholic drink. If a business or a licensed premises is at its capacity, they can still provide takeaway services, but this is only if the patrons that are waiting to collect their orders stay outside the venue and are able to be in a space where they're one and a half meters apart from each other. And all venues must continue to practice good hygiene. So those are some of the guidelines that we're currently working with here in Western Australia. But I guess, one of the other main restrictions and guidelines that remains in place is that WA cafes and restaurants and pubs should now also be updating their COVID safety plan and be implementing the updated version of those plans. So one of the first operational concepts that I want to share with you is, if you don't have a COVID-19 safety plan, it is really, really important for you and your business to think about a COVID-19 safety plan and about publishing that plan to ensure that your staff and your customers regain confidence in your business and in what you do and your commitment to them and their safety. So what does a plan normally include? The plan normally includes things like displaying COVID-safe signage, continue to supply hand sanitizers in your restaurant or bar and promote good hygiene practices, promote the use of face masks where and as necessary. To, as Dr. Andy's already said, reorganize seating and table plans and conform with the social distancing requirements that are in place in the region that you live. That you sanitize the tables and the chairs and use bleach and disinfectant, all those practices that we've been spoken about for some time now between each seating. That you train your staff and you make sure that your staff are practicing good hygiene practices within the restaurant and that your customers are aware of that. And most importantly, again, make sure that your customers are aware of your commitment to the safety and hygiene and let them know that you're serious about their safety. And also, another operational concept that you might then want to consider, once you've got the customers in the restaurant, you've got some display around your, I guess, a positive display to your customers about your commitment to safety, you might want to consider revenue growth through delivery. And if you don't already have delivery in place in your business, setting up food delivery or takeaway or in fact, drive-through services, if your business can sustain those, is a substantial operational concept that is helping many, many restaurants and bars in Australia and I guess around the world now increase their revenues and their profits and really keep their heads above water. So with revenue in the online food delivery projected to be around 2.028 billion in 2020, and that was adjusted earlier in the year for the effect of COVID-19, there are two mainstreams of delivery to consider, and the first one is restaurant-to-customer delivery. And the second is this platform-to-customer delivery. So let's just talk about restaurant-to-customer delivery first. Organize and implement third-party food delivery services such as Deliveroo, Menulog, Door-Grab and so on. In order to do this, it's really, really important to think about your menu and make sure that your menu is aligned to a delivery process, that the food that you're providing on your takeaway menus is food that can be prepared, presented, packaged and delivered and will reach the customer in a state that is of equal quality, hopefully of equal quality that you might be able to serve in your restaurant. And so that does take some thinking through, some strategizing about what you might want to put on those takeaway menus and how you want to go about that. And then, once you've got that menu in place, engaging a delivery service is a fairly easy process nowadays. There are many, many companies that offer delivery services. And I guess some of the restaurants are also looking at if they've got additional staff that they haven't been able to actively engage because of the reduced customers that reduce customers that are visiting their restaurant, use those staff to actually deliver the food on behalf of time. So if they've got free time, engage them to deliver the food for the restaurant. This will keep them engaged, this will keep them employed and also provide you those additional revenues through this food delivery service that we're talking about. The second delivery option that is also now becoming even more popular is this platform-to-customer delivery. So who would have thought that since Pizza Hut launched the very first pizza online delivery order system back in 1984, online food delivery service has become a billion-dollar business? Be mindful however, that platform delivery companies use, some of them take 20% to 30% of your revenues for their delivery fees. It's really, really important to compare very carefully the platform delivery service provider that you use and make sure that you choose one that suits your business. But what I want to talk about in addition to that is, you might want to also consider one of the latest trends, and that is to set up your own online delivery order platform. So there are now many, many different third-party providers that offer online delivery solutions. And Perry was speaking about IT and the need to put IT into your business. So these online delivery platforms is one way in which you can engage with the IT and the current technologies to help your business grow and help your business become more profitable in the long run. Those products like Toast or Pulse or Menu Drive or Chow Now or iMenu 360, and there are many, many, many of them, it doesn't take too long to find those service providers with a very basic internet search. They're all offering access to their platforms and delivery management systems that charge pretty well a flat fee. So rather than taking 20% to 30% of your revenue, you can get engaged with an online platform, an order/delivery platform that charges around $100 a year, and the fees vary again quite considerably. So choose carefully. So simply put, if your restaurant or bar doesn't already have a food delivery solution established, now's the time for you to think about it, now's the time for you to rethink your menu and now's the time to basically put one of those in place. If you think that this is something that might help you with your revenues and your profitability. And if you don't offer takeaway options, I guess, an extension to the delivery is once you've got a menu, once you've got a menu that is well-suited to packaging food and delivering or taking out, takeaway or takeout is not a new concept, but has also become much more popular in recent times because of the, or as consequence of the COVID-19 pandemic. The key here again is to design a takeaway-friendly menu, make sure your staff are involved in it. Some of the tricks that restaurants are using is that the takeaway menu uses up all the perishable goods that you order first so that you use your perishables more rapidly in those menus. Make sure the food or drink is takeaway-friendly, and we go back to those concepts about meaning that it's packageable, it's fresh, it still tastes good and looks good when it arrives at the home or at the office. And it's also important to adhere to prescribed food standards and safety plans when implementing takeaway foods. So remember to try and use bi-degradable or reusable materials for the packaging. Remember that what you save on staff costs might allow you to spend a little bit more on that packaging. So the packaging is important because it adds to the marketing concept and the branding concept of your business. And you should never lose an opportunity to market and brand. If you look at the pictures that I've got there, I think some of that packaging could certainly be branded better. And a concept about deliveries or serving, providing food to take home, most of those people have cut through at home, so there's no need for the extra disposable cut through. And this might also be a cost-saving for you to consider. Another conceptual, operational concept that I think is worth talking about, I think this is one that is impacting restaurants most significantly, and Perry just mentioned about the social media aspect. It touches on marketing, but it's also now working in terms of operationalizing and increasing your market share. This is the digital strategies. And this is probably one of the greatest marketing tools available today, that is this Insta-worthy or social-worthy food. That effectively means the restaurant and the restaurant patrons taking pictures of the food, and I guess this is now commonplace, people sitting down in a restaurant, the first thing I'm seeing with most customers is sit down as the phone comes out, they're taking photos of the food that's been served to them, and they're posting it to social media instantly. It's the impact and the power of those photos that they can have in terms of promoting your restaurant, promoting your facility and your business in generating interest in your brand, interest in your product and basically either growing your customer base or encouraging your existing customers to come back. And as Andy mentioned before, once they know you're open, once they know that the food is being served again, once they know the quality of the food, the quality of the service and the safety of your environment, I think you've got a greater chance of people returning to your businesses. It's important however, that you do come up with something creative when you're taking photos and you're posting them on social media. You want those photos to present your product in as best light as possible. So a unique dish that your restaurant offers that maybe other restaurants haven't done yet, a signature meal that you might come up with, something that stands out from the rest is something that you should be using and posting most regularly on social media that will encourage people to visit your restaurant. And once, a trick that's also been used is that once the photos are posted on social media, you can also run a competition to see if the customers can photograph that dish better than you. And you can maybe use those results from that competition to boost your social media presence and support your online blogs and your food write-ups and so on. So there's a whole range of things that come out of getting good photos of your product and your food and your beverage into the social media streams. Something to remember however, and this is probably where most people fail, is that whilst you use social media, it's really, really important to collect and analyze that data for the success of those programs. So make sure that the menu item is available for delivery. If number one, you photograph it and it's on your social media sites, well, then that food should not only be available for the sit-down menu, it should also be available for takeaway. And also ensure that it's a profitable menu item, that you're trying to use high-profit, high-margin products on your menus when you're putting them up on social media. It is critically important to track and use of social media data to consider ways to improve your business. And there's lots and lots of different products out there. Not only do the primary products like Google and Facebook and that offer tracking services, but there are lots and lots of third-party products that are available now to increase your analyzing and collection of data to impact your business in a positive way. Another way to increase revenues without increasing costs, and who would not want to increase revenues without increasing costs, is to sell or pre-sell these pre-sale vouchers or gift vouchers. Many coffee shops have been taking advantage of these and taking advantage of customer loyalty and pre-sale vouchers. And the concept here is basically you buy a voucher for $50, for example, and you receive 10 free coffees. Or, and you might have, as Andy said, an offer that says, if you buy one of these vouchers, you get 10 coffees and five free coffees or two free coffees or whatever, but there's also a marketing catch with the sale. The voucher system is not only redeemable, is not redeemable for cash. So what it means is that you're increasing your cash flow and you're also ensuring that the customers who buy these vouchers will come back and use their vouchers. So you're retaining existing customers and winning new customers at the same time without increasing your costs. You certainly are increasing your revenues. The pre-sale voucher creates immediate revenue streams for the restaurant and the bar coffee shop, but it also creates a level of customer loyalty, because again, they've got that prepaid credit and they will need to visit your premises in order to use up that credit. Remember, and again, if we go back to Perry's comment about your restaurant presence, online presence, there's a real failure for many restaurants to actually make these vouchers available on their, either their websites or through their social media. So make sure that your voucher systems, if you offer them, are available to your customers in the online space. Most importantly, I think, and this is one that I'll spend a few minutes talking about, is that it's really, really important to understand your data. If you look at the word crisis in Chinese, it's actually made up of two characters, danger and opportunity. So we've all become very aware of the dangers lately through COVID-19, but what are the opportunities? What can we do now that we maybe should have done before or that we didn't do before? And this is really looking for those opportunities that might exist in your restaurant that maybe we weren't so careful about or so we didn't manage the business as intensely as it might have been managed in the past. So one of the biggest things is understanding and controlling costs in order to be successful and in order to become more profitable. One example might be, while businesses is on the uptake and you have less inventory, obviously, less customers, less stock, I would hope. Learn how to better manage food costs, learn how to revacuum menu we've spoken about, and ultimately, look at how you can widen your margins. Remember, food cost is only one consideration, you also need to consider your labor costs and your other fixed costs. And all of this data should be collected and analyzed on a daily basis. And it's interesting to me, the number of restaurateurs that I speak to over a period of time that actually don't understand their figures on a day-by-day basis. And in many cases, some of them don't even understand their figures on a week-by-week basis. And I would hate to share with you, but I think it's important to share with you, some of those people don't understand their figures on a month-to-month basis. So really, have a look at your business, have a look at the daily figures and analyze those figures in order to really understand where the revenue is, where the profitability is, where the costs sit. The good thing about being in a crisis, and if there is anything good about being in a crisis, is that it really gives you an opportunity to get rid of the things that are nice to have and strip the business back down to basics, the things that you must have in order that the business runs leaner and meaner or more profitable, as we would say in the real world. And I've used a couple of examples there. So if you just run through the cost of goods, wages, fixed costs, operational costs, and you can see, we know that restaurants generally are marginal in terms of their profitability, and that profit will obviously vary according to the type of business that you operate and your location and a whole range of other variables. But you can see, if you look at delivery commissions, that changes that business model significantly right into a loss scenario. So understand your figures, as I've said already, better than probably what you've ever understood before. So finally, let me just share with you some ways, some things that I think, practical things that you should consider to help lower your cost of goods, because I think cost of goods are really one of your major costs in the restaurant and the bar industry. So if you haven't already, this is the time to compare your vendors or your suppliers, look at the prices they're charging and renegotiate with them wherever possible. I understand that they would also be hurting, but I understand they're also looking for business. So this is probably an opportunity for you to relook at what you're paying for goods and see whether or not you can get better prices. and see whether or not you can get better prices. Another way is to, if you haven't previously, bulk buy wherever possible. Understand that whilst your restaurant is quieter than probably it's been before, or your bar might be quieter than it has been before, you, you probably won't, don't want to bulk buy especially, especially perishable items. But there may be items that you can look at that are non-perishable, that you can buy in, in slightly larger quantities, if not yourself, in conjunction with another restaurant or another, or another local business in order to save your money and, um, increase your bottom line. The other thing really, and this, this is, uh, uh, some, something, something to consider in terms of technology and the, the effects of technology in your business, is the way in which you stocktake or take your inventory. Uh, there's still a, a very large number of operations that take that manually. And not only is that, uh, costs in terms of, uh, manpower, but it's also not very accurate. So if you haven't got a, a, an electronic, um, or integrated stock-taking system, that's, you know, with your point of sale and with your online and, and so on, um, it's now time to consider whether or not it's worth putting that in place. Uh, generally, a good stock-taking system has, has been shown by a number of vendors now that, that it can save upwards of eight percent of food costs. And that's substantial when you think that, um, your cost of goods sold is one of your largest costs in, in, in running your business. And finally, um, as two, uh, final ideas is get on top of your food waste. It doesn't matter how, how good your, um, inventory taking is. If your, uh, food waste is still out of control, in other words, you're not using the, the stock that you're purchasing, you're not using it well, you're not maximizing the, the, the usage of, of that product and you're wasting food, your food cost will always be high and your profitability will always be down. And finally, um, this is an, an opportunity to reevaluate your menu design. Not only what items you've got on the, on the menu, as we spoke about before, especially if you're going into the takeaway space, uh, but also the way in which your menu presents, the, the, the design, the, the appeal of, of the menu itself, the appeal of the dishes. We touched on photographs of food before. This is really an opportunity for you to relook at your menu design. Menu design can have a huge impact on, on what your guests are ordering. And, uh, that, that, that includes the font, the color, the layout, the menu description. All of these things can either prevent or promote why people would want to order an item on the menu and how, uh, you might promote your high-profit menu items over items that are not as high profit. So there's some practical tips about, um, what you might be doing now in preparation for, um, reopening. And finally, um, I think, uh, in, in closing, smart operators, in my view, are now taking this opportunity to look at their key performance indicators. And they, um, they're also having to look at their P and Ls more often. And that, I think, uh, this is an opportunity for you to take into consideration all of those, those ideas that, that might be out there. And there are obviously many, many more, uh, and, and see how they might fit with your operations and your businesses in order to, to assist you in reopening. So I hope that today I've outlined some of the operational concepts that have been used in the restaurant and bar industry here in Western Australia. But I know some of those ideas have been used, uh, much further afield than that. But more important that, uh, the, the ideas also offer you opportunities of streamlining and improving your businesses and your revenues in the longer term. So thank you to, uh, Tipfi and, um, uh, let's, let's, uh, hand it back to Beth and, and look forward to, uh, some of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. Um, you've given a lot of tips for, um, restaurant businesses to reopen. Those are very practical, especially for, um, small enterprises, how they can rethink their business model so that they can keep their customers and keep them coming back. Okay, so I think we're now, uh, ready to accept your questions through an open forum. We've received quite a number of, um, very interesting questions from our participants. Thank you very much for sharing your insights and, um, for giving questions to our speakers. So let me ask, uh, the first question. This one is from SCL Cabrera. So, um, any one of you can answer this question. Since people have this fear of going out, how do public, government and private sector bridge this gap? Since most of the places, especially here in the Philippines or in the country, are restricted or still restricted. Will this, you know, just be a waste of money if we try to calibrate, um, you know, our businesses at this time?
Actually, what I, what I would say to that is the, the government plays a very important role in reopening businesses. And the first thing is they have to set the policies of how restaurants and hotels and businesses operate. The second part is they have to enforce it. So they should reward those businesses by saying, this business is doing a great job following the policies and safety procedures. And if other businesses are not following rules, they should receive a punishment for not following rules. You know, give them a fine, take their license away, shut their business down. Because the only way that people will trust going into a, into a business is if they know that everyone is following the rules. I, I'll give one example in SBMA. Uh, the SBMA has a lot of rules and the operators here follow the rules. I was in, I was in one business and some customer came in and wanted to sit too close to somebody else. And the owner of the business came over and said, no, you're gonna have to leave because these rules are set by the, the local government and we follow the rules. And if we don't follow the rules, we're gonna get in trouble, so you have to leave. And so the customer left. It was done very professionally, very nicely, but the, the effect that was, I saw the owner enforcing the rules and protecting my safety in that operation. So that's a good example.
Thank you very much, Dr. Andy. Um, a follow-up question to that would be what assurance can restaurant owners, uh, give to ensure that the staff strictly implement safety protocols in food preparation and service? Because this could be a primordial reason why people don't go, go out and dine. So this question is from John Anthony Relox.
Yeah, I, I can add a few comments to that. I think, um, as, as I mentioned in my presentation, the, the importance is for the restaurants to display their, their commitment to safety, that, that, um, they, they need to make it visible to, to the customers about what they're doing in terms of staff training, what those staff are doing in terms of implementing safety procedures, making sure that they can see that the staff, uh, that there is handwashing facilities or that the staff are using, you know, whatever it might be to, to clean the, the, the tables, the chairs and whatever the customers are using. And that, uh, the signage and the commitment to, to that safety is well displayed. So I, I think that's probably the only way. And, and by, as Andy just said, you know, management embracing that and enforcing that, then, then, um, I think you, you've got half a chance of, of encouraging customers to use your, your services in your restaurants.
Yeah, Beth, Beth, on that one, the, the question is the restaurant, how can the restaurant owner ensure the staff follows the rules? Well, that's their job, that's their responsibility. It is the owner's responsibility to ensure that everybody follows the rules. And if they don't, they're not, then it's, they should take responsibility for the failure. If you're the owners, see, the, the one mistake managers make is they believe that the employees do wrong. No, employees cannot do anything wrong. It's the manager's responsibility to ensure they follow the rules. And if you don't train them properly, if you don't ma- motivate them properly, and if you don't punish them properly, that's your fault, that's not the employee's fault. So the managers need to be better managers and owners need to support their managers and set the policies for the restaurant. That's the way it works. If, if they don't do that, that's where they have problems at the lower levels. You know, you go to McDonald's, you go to, uh, Jolly Bee, you go to Starbucks. How come those places run so well? Because they have great management. So it can be done. It's up to, it's the manager's responsibility, any owner's to make sure it happens.
I agree. Um, apart from instituting, uh, policies, monitoring should be in place. And of course, we have to keep our employees' disciplines, especially now that we're talking about safety of our patrons, right? Dr. Perry, do you have something to say?
Well, I think a, a lot of this relates to what I would call nudge theory. You know, you, you, you can have the rules, but obviously there's a lot of gray areas in different area and, and, and different bits of operation. So I absolutely agree with what Dr. Anna's been saying, being, making sure that managers are managing. And it's making sure that we keep nudging people to make sure they are following the rules and doing the right things. Not in an officious way, but a way to, to show there are reasons that we're doing things this way. And, you know, it was very instructive to me years ago when I lived in, uh, in Hong Kong. And getting on a train in Hong Kong in those days was, was an absolute nightmare, horrendous. Uh, they simply painted some lines on the platform. And it was amazing how it changed behavior, because suddenly there was a rule. And even though they, they, it was, you know, in many countries, these things do get ignored. But it was incredible how it changed behavior, because they nudged people, they brought it in as a socially acceptable behavior and way of doing things. Um, to come back to the, to the other issues, we've had, uh, we have one case in our very live Sunway Shopping Mall, which is next to the university. One person sadly was found to be COVID-positive, working in one of the stores there. Uh, I went into the mall a couple of days later, it was deserted. And the challenge now for management has been to make people feel comfortable to coming back. And this is one of KL's largest shopping malls, probably got four hundred and fifty, six hundred shops on there. It's huge. And so the challenge has been making sure and tangibilizing to everybody that they're putting people's health and safety first. And it's by making sure we've got those rules and making sure they're followed up and nudging people to make sure they're doing the right thing.
That's fair. It's very nice, Dr. Perry. So now it's not just about, um, comfortable as having the experience, but also ensuring that, you know, the services that we provide are safe and, um, it will not, uh, in any way harm, uh, any of our customers. Thank you very much. Another question from an anonymous attendee, this is what we recommend. People really want to escape from the hustle and bustle of the city and the UNWTO is promoting rural tourism. So how will the metropolitan areas be? How, how would the metropolitan areas integrate the rural sense in their businesses? Since urban and rural tourism is totally different. I think in connection with this, uh, question, I, 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 I would read this, uh, other one. So what are your suggestions in helping out accommodation facilities in the rural areas um, for, for them to survive in these very challenging times?
Yeah, Beth, Beth, actually, a week ago, I just gave a presentation at Joji Iligan School on World Tourism Day. And the topic was rural development. Uh, Dr. Vik Nair from University of Bahamas is an expert in that area. But my, my comments in that presentation were people in the city want to get away from the city right now. So the best time, this is the best time for rural development ever, because people want to go away. They can't go to the big sporting events, they can't go to big concerts, they can't go to a crowded movie theater. So they're gonna look for places to go. And rural tourism is great, because if you have a lake, if you have a mountain, if you have a field and you put a table in the middle of that field and say, I'll serve dinner to you in the middle, you're gonna get a customer. So the opportunities are for the rural tourism to provide quality, safe service. They can charge more because people are looking for those places, the open air with a lot of space, with a lot of people. And rural tourism has to be careful too. The goal is not to have mass tourism come to the rural area, that's how you destroy it. So my, my opinion is charge a high price, provide a quality product and you'll get, you'll get the number of customers that, that your community can support. But you have to remember that the entire community has to be involved in it, because if one area is doing something and it's causing problems for another area, then it's not gonna work. So the whole community has to work together to develop policies in that little neighborhood that allows people from the city to come out, escape, have a good time and go home and help the rural, uh, rural, uh, revenue development too. Because everybody needs, everybody's out of a job, everybody needs to make some extra dollars.
Yeah, I, I would absolutely agree with that. I think this has been the best time for rural tourism, uh, that's come along. For a long time, it was suffering because people wanted to go to the cities. And we've now got an opportunity to tell people about clean air, clean water, et cetera. And if you look back at past health issues and pandemics, um, there was infrastructure built about it. Uh, many of the seaside piers that were built around Europe and in North America were all to do about getting, uh, fresh air and being away out of the, out of, out of cities. So we're seeing that again. The key thing, obviously, two things here. One is that a lot of the infections are in cities, so we have to be careful. We don't transmit those into rural areas where there's less medical facilities and so forth. So again, it's about reinforcing the health, uh, of not only your guests, but also your, your community as well. And, you know, in a lot of rural areas, people may not be as on top of, uh, the rules that they are in the metropolitan areas. So again, that's something that those businesses really must take seriously. Um, somewhat helped by the fact that people coming from the cities are more aware of those. But it's making sure their staff also are aware that, um, you know, this is how the pandemic can spread into rural areas, which would be more damaging. So again, it's making sure you've got that correct balance, uh, for operations.
I guess we heard, yes, they, uh, from Parikshat in India, that, that the Indian government is, is opening up regional tourism as being one, one of their, their, their first ways of recovering. And I think from an Australian's perspective, that's pretty well, in Western Australia anyway, a strategy that's been used very effectively. You know, travel, travel to the regions, use the regional products and services that are available, experience the country, experience the, the culture that you may not normally experience, but because you go overseas. And, and that's, that's helping to, to reinvigorate the industry.
I think that's a very good, um, theme for this year, uh, in celebration of, uh, uh, World Tourism, uh, Day in Oman. And, um, I think we need to really shift, um, from urban to rural tourism. That way we can manage our capacities and we can have better involvement of the community. Okay, next question would be, I think this is very interesting, from Regina Elcano. She posted this, uh, question in the chat box. It reads, um, improvements under the new normal would mean increase in prices to augment the expenses. As a business manager, what will be the most pragmatic approach in considering this improvement? Example, automated visitor management, contactless payment schemes, improve and personalize hygiene kits for clients, and still keeping reasonable and affordable prices for the customers. How then will you make your patrons and new clients understand these essentials under the new normal?
You know, I know Alan's a technology expert, but I'm gonna start off with saying that technology is not for every operation as well as you think. Um, you know, when you walk into a restaurant these days, they want you to scan the QR code to look at the menu. And, and my wife goes, I don't know how to do that. And even if they show her how to do it, she doesn't want to do it. So they hand her a piece of paper. Now, this is the good, good part, that piece of paper has the menu on it and that piece of paper goes into her pocket when she goes home. So it becomes a form of advertising. So on that paper, not only do you have the menu, but you have how to order food delivery specials next week information. You're now putting it at something that they're gonna put on their desk and they're gonna see when they get home. While the QR code, you're gonna look at the menu in the restaurant, then you're gonna leave and you may never look at the menu again. So, you know, text, uh, I was, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm going a little, I'm gonna do the hybrid technology. I want paper and I want a combo for, you have a choice when you go into that restaurant. Alan?
Yeah, listen, Andy, uh, I think, uh, you, you make some very good points. And, and I think, uh, you mentioned in your marketing conversations, uh, some, some interesting stuff as well. And Perry touched on this. I think one size does not fit all and it won't be that way for, 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 for a long time, if, if not ever. I think that there's no doubt that it's a multi-pronged approach, that you don't have to get involved in technology, you don't have to, uh, you know, look at increased costs in spaces that, that you're not comfortable with. And the first thing that, uh, you mentioned, Andy, some time ago, is understand your customers, who are you marketing to? And what, what is the most effective way? So is it using technology or is it going back to traditional marketing? Is it using word of mouth, whatever it is? Those, those things are still core to your business, don't forget the basics. And if you can increase the use of technology and that enables you to increase your market share, increase the profitability of your business, then those are other strategies that you can use. But I think the trickier is not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. If you've got a good business, find ways that you can now re-attract your, your loyal customers and look at new customers whilst maintaining your cost base and, and hopefully the business survives through this period. It doesn't always mean that you, you, you must adopt new methods of business if what's been working for you, uh, over the years, uh, you know, will still work for you.
Yeah, look, I, I, I know I pushed quite hard on the technology side there. Um, um, I, I again agree that we've got to find ways, depending on the market, that your operations, uh, are working with. But let me reflect on a couple of things that Dr. Andy was also saying. I've probably given my phone number, personal details to more businesses in the last couple of months than I've ever done in my entire life. Now, what I find interesting from all this is that I have not heard from one of them. Not by my health necessarily, but no follow-up marketing, nothing. And as people are now traveling less, they're going, dare I say, to more local businesses. And there is an opportunity here of a way of connecting, reconnecting. And as Dr. Andy was saying, being able to offer specials. And as Dr. Andy was saying, being able to offer specials, to make, to find ways to get people to pay forward, to get them coming back through your door again and again. People are adapting and finding new routines. How is your business going to become part of that if you're a local business or restaurant in, in that case? So there are other ways of doing this and of finding ways of using that technology, helping people. So sure, there's a lot of people who are challenged with technology. I'm not saying there's not. And again, particularly with older markets versus younger markets. If you're in with a younger market crowd, they're probably already way ahead of you. So the challenge there is to keep up with them. Because they've already got the coupons, the ways that, that, that they're working. I, I watch how people have, um, now adapted to so much home delivery with food. Again, six months ago, if I'd said to you what that business, the scale and growth of that business, you'd have told me I was mad. But it has happened. People have adapted. So again, it's, uh, I, I would suggest a little bit more nudging people along that way. And it's finding ways to keep connected to customers and remembering to keep your business relevant to them. So as things come out of this pandemic, you're still there, you're still connected with them.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perry. Again, we have to rethink and recalibrate it. Technology should be an ally, and, uh, we have to look for ways on how we can use it properly. Um, a lot of our, um, you know, participants are transitioning. We never used to be, you know, um, very comfortable having this, uh, arrangements in terms of learning. And so I think, um, technology is good, but we have to use it properly. And, uh, you should never stop learning. You mentioned something about QR code. So I encourage all the participants to, um, watch and participate our thirty-minute session. They have a lot of insights about what's latest in technology and how to use them properly. I understand that majority of our participants are from the academy, and so I would like to ask this question from Dr. Melinda de Guzman. Aside from conducting online classes, what are your other effective and best recommendations for academic institutions to best adapt to the present situation, particularly in the tourism and hospitality education? You talk about transitioning, um, on the business side, but, uh, I think, um, when you talk about the, the academy, it also has some perspective on the business side as well. And so I think, uh, we can help our, uh, participants, especially the teachers this morning.
Well, uh, as I'm, you know, based at a university in, here in Malaysia in KL, at Sunway University, I would say that this has been for many institutions, a huge mind shift. And whilst we'd had in many cases specialized online universities who did their thing, most universities were very firmly in the face-to-face and some had moved somewhere in between blended approaches. Now, I think it's fair to say that most hospitality and tourism schools have been quite reticent to go down that line. Uh, we saw ourselves very much as being in the people-to-people business, and so therefore that was where we stayed with our focus. So I think particularly for hospitality and tourism, this has been a, a huge hill to climb. Now, having said that, I think the, there are huge opportunities that now come from moving and being able to deliver online. For a start, you know, this allows a huge amount of, of opportunities to connect with other academics and institutions around the world. So this last week, I was speaking at an Edutec Digital Summit Conference, which was in Saudi Arabia. Now, obviously, I didn't go there. Uh, it was quite interesting because I had to chair two sessions. One was about the virtual classroom, and one was about the digital divide and how to cross this in education. And a couple of things came out of this very, very clearly. And interestingly, on one of them was talking about the virtual classroom, was again how the digital immigrants and teachers were struggling with it, but how the students were actually way ahead already. And so I think the challenge has been more for educators to work out how to get their content online. But it opens up the opportunity to crowdsource best content. Uh, it's seen innovations. After all, we only came, uh, the three of us only really dreamt up there, I say thirty minutes, as a reaction to that. And that, now, so now that means that we are able to call in specialists, guest lecturers from both other universities or from industry. We're able to bring in best practice from around the world much more readily than dare I say we were able to do a year ago. So I think for a lot of educators, how to think outside that box now? How can you create that global classroom? What is it you can offer as well to other universities? I've been working on a virtual exchange project here at Sunway University. Before, we would exchange students, put them on airplanes, send them off for a semester. We can't do that now. So my question is, how do I move from global mobility to global learning? How can I bring other people's worldviews, culture, um, and perspectives into our classroom? So that's now our focus. So again, it's thinking outside the box. Because the students now are no longer sitting in our classrooms. Uh, we, we've actually got a hybrid model, so we have some students in class, we have some who are not. And so we can now bring in other students. Uh, so a couple of weeks ago, I took five students on a virtual tour to the UK. We worked very closely with a British university in, in Lancaster. The students never left our campus. We have an eight-hour time difference. But we worked out a whole range of activities at this end and at their end to get the students to come together. We took them on virtual tours, walking around the university. We had, we had to meet the Chancellor of the university, which has never happened before in real life, I should point out. We, um, took them, we had shared meals, so we have what we call immersive experiences as well. We did British fish and chips, we had afternoon tea. And so we created a whole range of other experiences for students that we've never had before. And the advantage of that is that we can involve a lot more students. Before, maybe ten, twenty percent of students went on exchange, I can now involve a hundred percent of our students. So I think to answer that question, there are lots of other advantages to being able to do things online, which we probably hadn't appreciated or embraced earlier. That would be my thought, Beth.
Yeah, my, my comment on that, Lily Beth, is you can learn a lot online, but you can't learn how to live in the real world online. So projects for teachers, if you're teaching a cooking class, tell your students, cook dinner for your family. But write a recipe, buy the ingredients, figure out your food costs, and then, then get an evaluation after you cook that dinner. If you're in the events industry, host an event with your friends using safe practices. Plan it, do a banquet event, order, figure, order all the food, do the lighting, pick the music, put everything like you're doing, even if it's only for three people, that's great, have a party. And if, and if you're not, if you're in an accounting firm, do a budget. You know, how much are you gonna spend this month? Do me a balance sheet. I don't wanna see a profit and loss on your personal expenses for a month. There's a lot of different things that students can do at home, but you have to show them what to do and tell them what to do. And then if you give them a grade for doing a good job, they'll appreciate it. But that's the way, that's the way I would approach it on an online learning platform.
And if I just make some closing comments, I think quite controversially, I'd like to say that I think the, uh, education industry is probably one of the most conservative industries there is. And that the, the, um, embracing technology and, and thinking outside the box, even though we teach these concepts, are probably some of the least embraced concepts within education. So it's time for, for educators, faculty, managers, and so on to start thinking about how we can do business differently. And this has been spoken about some time, but I guess our industry is probably one of the worst at, at doing that.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Sperry, Andy, and, um, Alan. I agree, um, the academy is one of the most traditional and conservative, um, sector. And, um, when we are doing this initially, the, the online learning and of virtual conferences, um, we've identified a lot of limitations. But, um, as we do it, we now discover that there are more opportunities than limitations. And so, um, I have here a lot of questions in the QA, Q and A tab, uh, very interesting questions, but I was given, uh, uh, a time is up, uh, signal, and so I'm going to ask my last question. Uh, and the last question would be, what's the most challenging transitions that you have in your personal and professional lives at this point? So maybe very short, personal and professional, what's the most challenging transitions that you've experienced?
You know, I'll, I'll start, I'll start with that one. You know, uh, a year ago, I, I retired a couple of years ago. I, I go in to do presentations even at LPU and, and, uh, South University of Santa Musa, and live is great. But then now we are media movie stars. So I was never comfortable on camera, and here we are. We have to do lighting, we have to do sound, we have to get our costumes ready. So all those things are new, and if you, if you don't do it, the more you do it, the better you get. And so that's my advice for all those. You may not like it, but if you do it more and more, you'll get better, you'll, you'll feel better, your students would appreciate it. And that's, that's what I learned in the last six months.
Thank you, Dr. Randy.
Yeah, personal challenges for me would be, um, you know, the, the, the social distancing aspect with friends and, and, and the social interaction with friends, uh, especially in lockdown. But, uh, as is unfortunate in Western Australia, that, that we, we've, we've overcome that. We're in the stage four, which means that we're, we're able to interact fairly openly now. We can visit. We live a relatively normal life, although there is still social distancing rules in place. And then I guess from a professional perspective, a little bit like Andy, you know, I, I have been working online for some time now. So I think it's been an opportunity to really explore that to another level and, and engage with clients, customers, and people that I work with, um, in a virtual online environment in a much more effective way than what we've done in the past.
Yeah, well, Lou, let me add, uh, you know, I, I did a lot of traveling. I'm, I'm just gonna show you the kind of places I've been to this year. So, you know, I started out the year with my first trip, which was fun enough to the Philippines. And so I travel a lot during the year, and I love being on places like this, beautiful locations, uh, places like Boracay. You know, that's my year. And so being able to move to different universities to meet with different colleagues. And suddenly that all came to a screeching halt. So, yeah, personally, uh, that probably has been the hardest thing. And obviously, I, I've got my daughter, uh, who is studying overseas in Australia. So haven't seen her for an awful long time, and I sadly think it's gonna be a very long time until I get to see her again. So I don't think being able to get on an airplane and take to the skies is, is gonna be something that's gonna happen very quickly. Professionally, I think the, the real wake-up call came for me when, um, early this year, when I, as I normally go to Austria, and I deliver a series of guest lectures there. And I have about sixty students, of whom probably forty-five are exchange students who travel to Austria, and then I, I go there. And, uh, this year, obviously, none of that could happen. Some of the students had already got to Austria when they went into lockdowns, some had, were back, had gone home, some were stuck somewhere in between. So I had students from eighteen nationalities, and they were now spread across fifteen time zones. And I had to work out how to deliver my classes and my lectures over those three days. Working with lecturers, uh, in, across three continents. I'm in Asia, one was in Africa, one was in Europe. So that became very, very challenging, um, because, you know, of the different time zones, the ways of engaging with students. And but what I learned from that process was that many of the students were able to adopt much faster than I was to the technology. Uh, I had, whilst I'm normally a very engaged person, like with Dr. Andy now, when you come to institutions like LPU and give large lectures, suddenly I'm staring at a screen. But what I discovered was that students were very active when I put forum chats up, I gave them a video to watch. I had much more feedback that I was getting in those spaces than I would ever get in a classroom. And also it benefited many students where English was their second language, and they felt a bit nervous about speaking up in class. Whereas online, they were, felt more comfortable with putting those things in. So I've seen a lot of pros and cons with this, but I'm suspecting, as, as Alan pointed out there, education's been pretty conservative. I was stuck in my ways of doing things. It's got me out of that. And as Dr. Andy has mentioned, you know, we, suddenly you, you can move from being, uh, a lecturer in, in, in one small space to suddenly having a global platform and being able to do that. So those have been my challenges this year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perry. Uh, but we still miss you, all of, all the three of you in person. Um, this will pass, and, uh, I think, uh, this is an opportunity for all of us to explore this type of arrangement. We just have to keep, uh, a positive spirit, and of course, we have to shift our minds, our, um, emotions into something positive so that we can, you know, cope. And, um, Mam Tina, I, I don't know if you've experienced any challenges, personal and professional?
Oh, I'm part of the panel now. Okay, there's a lot. Uh, now, uh, I, I have a grandson, so I'm doing a lot of virtual calls with them daily. I see him maybe every other week, but the biggest challenge would be travel. It's not challenge, actually, it's a plus for me, because now I don't have to go through traffic. I don't have, you know, in a, to this afternoon, I'll be in car in Baguio. It normally is a six-hour travel. But in a, in a press of a button, I'll be in Baguio later. So, uh, that would be the big plus for this. That's the biggest transition for me. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mam Tina. And, um, of course, I would like to invite everyone to, um, participate every Wednesday 2:00 PM, thirty-minute talks. Uh, of course, this is initiated by Doctors Andy, Perry, and Alan. Um, they have very interesting topics, uh, every week. And, um, it's, uh, very rewarding, especially for faculty and, and students. Um, and, uh, we've immensely enjoyed all the sessions. Um, I always say it's a Wednesday date every 2:00 PM, and I've never missed a session. Thank you very much for generously sharing. At this point, we would like to award our speakers. And, um, Mam Tina is here already, so I'm going to read the citation. Tourism Industry Board Foundation Incorporated, um, together with the Department of Tourism and Technical Education Sales Development Authority, awards this certificate of appreciation to Dr. Andy Nasrishekh, um, Dr. Perry Hobson, Dr. Alan Williams, international educators in grateful recognition of their valuable contribution as resource speakers during the TP Sport webinar entitled, "Transitioning to a Post-COVID World: Ideas to Reboot Business, What Works and What Doesn't", given this eighth day of October via Zoom. Signed, Maria Cristina Giacchino, Chairperson of Tourism Industry Board Foundation Incorporated, and Ruwena Montesilio, Director, Office of Industry Manpower Development Standards, Department of Tourism. Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Andy. And Dr. Alan Williams.
Thank you.
And Professor Perry Hobson.
And at this point, I'd like to award the certificate of appreciation as well to our moderator. She's been the, uh, I think, the, uh, the glue that binds everyone together, because we've had her since day one. In fact, there's a call for her, for, for, for her to host again the next, uh, webinar. May I please allow you, Beth, to please show the, uh, certificate of appreciation that we're giving you as well? Uh, please, everybody, if you can give a virtual clap to, uh, Beth, she's been doing a good job of, uh, as moderator as well.
Thank you very much, Mam Tina. It's well appreciated. Always honored to, um, to be of assistance to TP DOT and TESDA. It's my pleasure.
Okay, and then the next certificate would be for our participants. Beth?
Again, the same certificate is being awarded to our active participants, given to us by TP, Department of Tourism and TESDA. The certificate of participation is awarded to a participant for having participated in TP Sport webinar entitled, "Transitioning to a Post-COVID World: Ideas to Reboot Business, What Works and What Doesn't", given this eighth day of October via Zoom. Signed, Maria Cristina Aquino and Director Ruwena Montesilio. Please be reminded to accomplish the evaluation form, and after submitting this, you will get your e-s certificate and copy of the speaker's presentation. And you have on your screen the link and the QR code. I think this will also be, um, posted in our chat box. So please, um, help us to improve our webinars in the coming days and months. So please give us your feedback.
I don't know how to use that QR code.
Of course. Thank you very much, Dr. Andy, Dr. Alan, Dr. Perry. It's very rewarding to learn a simple skill every, you know, thirty-minute talks. Um, and so we have to keep track of this learning, so for, for everyone, to keep us motivated and never stop, right? And for the synthesis, of course, I give the floor back to the Chairperson of the Tourism Industry Board Foundation Incorporated. He's Maria Cristina Giacchino. Mam Tina?
Thank you. We promise you, uh, we will have the gentleman from thirty minutes, but we've gone beyond thirty minutes. We've actually multiplied that three times or four times fold. But the synthesis is actually going to just, uh, get a, a few key points that we, we got from this particular talk. So my call to action would be, Beth, can you please move, my call to action moving forward is to still be hospitable. In this particular, uh, time in our lives right now, be hospitable is something that we should do. And so my be hospitable would now be, be healthy. As mentioned earlier, there has to be social distancing, both for employees as well as for your customers. You've got to make sure that you maintain the health, otherwise you've got just one poor announcement about somebody who's being affected by COVID in your enterprise, and that's the end for your particular business. Be observant. Take a look at what's happening right now. There are a lot of new, new products, new service, new ways of pivoting your business so that you can see how it can do. Uh, they mentioned quite a number of, uh, ideas. Uh, maybe do takeout, if you see that there are a lot of takeout, uh, take-up items, maybe you can do one more package. You can even do MICE events right now, where you have, uh, digital box or gourmet boxes that are brought to you after attending a conference. Be supportive of each other. Take a look at how you can maybe bundle together, collaborate with others to create a, a business opportunity that was not to create a business opportunity that was not there before. Be patient. Six months is going on, but you know, you don't know when business is going to be opening. You've got to make sure that, be patient, test, test the waters, try out a few products, try out a new service that you have, and then you'll be able to get that. Inspire others with your success stories. I was just telling Beth, how much is failure right now? Is it try and try until you succeed? Yes, because there's nothing you lose. If you don't do anything, you have much more to lose. Be thankful, thankful that you're still alive, thankful that you're able to operate your business, thankful that you're still, you still have students. There's a lot to be thankful about and do a lot of this every day. Be adaptable. You can't say that you'll go back to what it was prior to March. It is not going to be the same, it's going to be different. And so you've got to make sure that you adapt with whatever new protocols are being given by IATF, by the Department of Tourism. Take a look what's new protocols that are being also implemented in other parts of it. Be bold. New products, new service, there's no limit to what kind of products you can offer right now. Be logical. Take a look, as the steps are defined by Dr. Perry, he had five steps. Courtesy of his Bank of Canada, was it, Dr. Perry? But you know, there are ways, there are tested ways of doing things and maybe you can too learn from them. And the last would be be enthusiastic. There are a lot of things that we can do. Until you are, you are still living, until you are still breathing, there is hope for everyone. So I thank you very much for your kind attention. I'd also like to invite you to the next webinar, that webinar that we're going to be hosting on November 12. This is May Pasco, Parin, sa panahon ng COVID. What is this? There is DOT's progressive accreditation system, which requires what? A number of employees to be NC certified by TESTA. But at the same time, there is also performance appraisal, portfolio assessment that is given, that is undertaken by TESTA. And this is actually free. You submit your portfolio of accomplishments and they will award you whatever certificate is appropriate based on the accomplishment that you have. So Christmas is still here, we can use Pasco, Parin, perform a portfolio assessment as our way of receiving this very great gifts from the Department of Tourism and TESTA. I'd like to say as my last slide, it's more fun in Philippines. It still continues to be more fun in the Philippines, but what's the next slide? Next, can you press that, Beth? Transitioning is more fun. There are things that we're learning, things that, you know, you cannot be status quo. It has to be something that you have to move forward to. So in behalf of TIVP, my heartfelt thanks goes to Dr. Andy for allowing us to bring you in to TIVP. Dr. Perry for sharing your wealth of experience. And Dr. Alan for, again, giving us a very good time in this webinar. So again, we wish you luck, we wish you thanks. What's our next slide? Mabuhay to everyone. Maraming salamat. We will now be giving you a link to the video if you fail to get that. But we will send you an email consisting, containing the email. Can we just go back to the slide where we have the survey link, Dr. Beth? But again, thank you, everyone. We are very, we are so thankful with the positive comments that we receive in the chat box as well as the very nice questions. We'll see if the three gentlemen will be happy enough to answer to some of the questions we were not able to raise here. So thank you very, very much. Have a good lunch, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, thanks very much, everybody.
Yes, thank you a lot. Yes. So we will be awarding again our next most, what says, engaged participant. So see you next week in 30 minutes, but see you next month for our next webinar in TIVP. Bye, everyone.
Bye. Take care.
Yes. Do we go, Beth? Thank you, Beth. You have been an angel again, linking everyone together. And we thank you for your time. More power to you and to our me as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mom Tina.